Ladies and gentlemen, we would now call the Shreveport City Council meeting to order. Councilman Willie Bradford will give us the invocation and I'll bring, ask the scouts to come down and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Praise God we come again, thanking you for this day and for your many blessings. As we come to this day, Lord, may I ask your presence in this meeting of the city council, we pray, Lord, that you will be with us and direct our minds and our hearts, and, Lord, that we will be conscious of all of our citizens, even at least them. We pray for the city, pray for the mayor, council members, as we desire, Lord, to make this a better city. Bless us, is my prayer. In Jesus' name, amen.
Okay, scouts, if y'all will come in right here.
In relation to the flag of the United States of America, in tribute of all for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Matta Flur, will you please now call the robe?
Captain McGraw.
Present.
Captain McGraw.
Here.
Captain McGraw.
Present.
Captain McGraw.
Present.
Captain O'Malley. Captain Bowden.
Here. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of the administration?
Still move.
Motion by Councilman Minkin, second by. Councilman Bowman, in a discussion, please vote.
I got the Russians attacking, right here on my thing, another cyber warfare, right here.
Oh, the Russians, not it.
Somebody could give me a hand vote and then ask somebody to put that need to come up.
And motion passes. Council members, at this time, have all recognitions or things, yes, rewards to... I'd like to recognize, if I made the truth, nine, from my church, would y'all please stand and come down and give us your name? From Christ United Methodist Church, Ms. Jen Low, come right on down to the mic here to give us your name. Welcome to the Shreveport City Council today. Your government in action. If I'm right there to that microphone right there, say to give us your name.
Hi, my name is Jacob Bridges.
You're welcome.
Hi, my name is Kyle Low.
Hi, my name is Noah Jacobs.
Hi, my name is Alan Roberts.
Hi, my name is Derek Croft.
Hi, my name is Steven Bledo.
Hi, my name is Jen Low.
Thank you, Jen, we've been glad to have you all here. There any other council member at this time would like to be recognized? See, if none, how about Mayor, do you like to be recognized? I want you to know, that's got to be the most beautiful dress I've ever seen.
Biting her up for something.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And he doesn't know anything either. I have some announcements, Mr. Chairman, if it's my turn.
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you so much, and good afternoon, everybody. Chairman Flurry, Vice Chairman Bowman, and other council members. I'd like to thank those council members who were present at the press conference yesterday that we laid, where we laid out our strategies and things that we were doing to protect crime in our city. And I also want to thank all the agencies that were there, who are constantly working in partnership with us. So, we want to say thank you to all of our first responders and law enforcement agencies who put their lives on the line every day trying to protect us. Here at the city, we have a lot of programs where we're working with more than 13,000 young people this summer, and this is our way of investing in the future leaders of this city. We have many, many programs. I'll read just a few of them, from tennis to basketball, baseball, summer track, boxing, weightlifting, football camp, golf, recreation-type programs, summer camps, where Shreveport Police Department does something called the Butterfly Camp and Law &amp; Youth Camp, therapeutic summer camps, swimming, and the list goes on and on and on. But I did want our publics to know that most, all of these programs are free to the young people in our city, but it is very significant that we, as leaders and other citizens, invest in the future of this great city. And so, I want to say thank you to the council members who've approved budgets so that we can make this happen for 13,000 young people in this city. We also want to say that the Spring 27 Leadership Academy, which consists of employees in the city of Shreveport, will be graduating this Thursday, June the 29th, 2017, and we want to say congratulations to those people who have participated in that Leadership Academy. I will be sending some more details to council members a little bit later, so that if you would like to attend, you're certainly invited to come. Also, this morning, Councilman Everson and I also celebrated the groundbreaking on a $12 million expansion at Rettwood Hospital here in Shreveport, and of course, it's an exciting opportunity to help and serve a lot more people right here in Shreveport. Last week, we held a groundbreaking for our new Fort Trans Southwest transfer hub. I want to thank the council members who were there to support us for that event. We've invested more than $560,000 in Phase One of this operation, which is part of the strategy to better serve major employment centers from here to southeast Shreveport and all the way down to the port of Bojangles Cattle and Bojangles. We continue to serve our citizens with numerous events. The city has supported so many things since we last met, swimming pool open house at Southern Hills Park, Movies and Moon Beans featuring Secret Life of Pets at Fort Park, June 16th, Let the Good Time Roll Festival at Festival Plaza, June 15th through 18th, Fun Runs at Billbury Park in Hamlet's Park last Saturday in the District, June 24th in Red River District, and Safe Summer Basketball featured guest speakers Judge Stewart, C.A.O. Crawford, Councilman Bradford, and yours truly, the mayor. And those are the announcements that we have for today. The one last thing I do want to say is that I'll be leaving this afternoon after five, going to help celebrate the life of one of our great educators and civic leaders that passed away last weekend, Mrs. Lillian Mothershed, and they'll be having that service here over at the Wilson Center, Zion Baptist Church, Wilson, John Wilson Building. But Ms. Mothershed certainly was trailblazer in education here in our area and in Cattle Parish. Those are the announcements we have for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Does anyone have any questions for property standards at this time? Anyone have question for Mr. Croweberg in regards to the implementation of the collection revenue plan? Mr. Bradford, I believe it's already been tested, and Mr. Sweeney? I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind, please come forward. Do you have a master plan report? I didn't want to interfere with that.
We've not been able to get a quorum for our committee for the last two months or more. We've rescheduled for our meeting, hopefully to have on July the 7th. It's hard, I guess in the summer months, as you well know, with people going on vacation, it's hard to get everybody together, but we hope to have that meeting fairly soon.
Okay, thank you. I had a couple of questions, if you don't object.
No, no.
I know that you're open and transparent. My question is concerning what I read in the news report, different place, about your closing of your office from 12 to 1:00, and I find it a little bit puzzling to me, and before you give me an explanation, I ask this question. Do you suppose, and maybe I'm not being fair to you, but you suppose, since Councilman Everson is my guide in these matters, do you think that you and I, and perhaps if I could talk to Councilman Everson, and maybe we could talk about a solution to that problem? Are you...
I'm always open to conversations, Councilman, and you know that anytime you want to sit down and talk to me about any issue, I'm certainly open for that.
Okay, fair enough. But I'd like to say that it is a bit unusual that we have, and I'd just offer that in the order that we might talk and discuss some type of solution. That's all we want.
I, I, sure.
We're not here to bash you or your department, but when we find things like this, the citizens come to us and question it, then it's only fair that we break it up.
And like I said, I, my door is always open to you.
In regards to your budget, I had one other question, if you might allow.
Sure, sure, go right in.
In regards to your budget, how are you looking on your salary increases this year?
I am not...
Are you over budget?
No, no, actually, I'm right in budget as far as my salary is going forward, as it stands right now.
All right, now, I don't understand, you're gonna have to help me there.
Okay.
When you say going forward, I don't quite understand.
Okay, so, what we do is, we periodically look at our budget, as we all, good organizations should do.
Yes, sir.
To see whether or not we're tracking correctly on our revenues and our expenditures. And right now, we're in a good shape in terms of our revenue and expenditures. What we get from the finance department typically is information that shows us through logos and the access to those, that data. It tells us what percentage of our budget we're at, and by this time of the year, because you all know, we're already getting into the budget frame of mind, because it's June, that if you're around 50% right at this point in time in your expenditures, then you're doing darn good, you're on target. And that's pretty much where we are right now, because one of my most important things I feel like I have to do is to be a good financial steward for my organization and be able to monitor its pulse at any moment, because you never know what's gonna happen that can change those dynamics. So, right now, we're tracking well.
Okay, good. Any other council member have a question?
Okay, I have one. Now, I was looking at a lot of this data that we got. Could you be over budget in the salaries character?
Could I be? Well, I think as it stands right now, you gotta remember something, just to kind of lay this out, because it's kind of a series of moving parts. I had one employee that left the organization at the end of December and took a position elsewhere, and I'm in the process of filling that position, but it's been a while. We didn't fill it immediately, it took several months. Then I have another individual that retired back in the middle of May, and I'm in the process of replacing that individual through the process of, you know, solicitation and whatever. So, some of the things in terms of my budget are always based upon what's being spent at that point in time of what we have not spent. And that's true with, if you go and look at the other city departments, it's the same thing, yeah.
Yes, but if you have gaps, i.e. positions not filled for the full 12 months, you would be under budget.
Yes, sir, I would be.
Okay, there wouldn't be any...
That's correct.
There, I mean...
Right, and do remember something, that you guys just approved a budget amendment for me that switched some of that money out of personnel so that we could do the financial sustainability study.
Contractual services.
Right, so I've been already moving the pieces around to make it work for the budget for this year.
Okay, so, I guess what I'd ask you to do is take a look at your next, the end of May's budget in your salaries character, and make sure you're not over budget.
Certainly will do that, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other question? Thank you, Mr. Sweeney.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Mr. Thompson?
We don't have a public here, and we have no item to add to the agenda at this time. I think we might have some comments.
Okay, we do have some public comments. If the vice chair, just tall rose up. We have Rod, Mr. Rod Williams, speaking on the resilient house. He will come down and speak to the panel.
Chairman Flurry, Vice Chairman Bowman, Mayor, and members of the city council. It's been a moment since I've been in front of you, and thanks for forwarding me the opportunity to be here today. My name is Rod Williams. I reside at 9674 Caliakale Lane here in Shreveport, and I'm the CEO of the Resilient House, which is a project we have in front of you now. You know, Resilient House has done a great job with looking at the amenities that's brought forth in the MPC, I think you have that report in front of you, minutes from that report. Not only have we agreed to all the amenities that are there, we've actually taken some time to self-impose some additional standards for ourselves, to make sure that we're doing. Everything needs to be done and be compliant with all the things that are expected of us to be compliant with the Resilient House. I should say, at the outset, there's absolutely no construction on the campus. Our intent is to repurpose all the buildings on that campus. Those buildings have been there for close to 10 years now, goal is to repurpose every one of those, but we want to keep in accordance with the regulatory requirements and not move forward until we have all approvals from all bodies that are governing the population of themselves, and we respect that, that process. As you know, the addictive medicine space is a national, national issue, and we in turn here want to step up and be proactive and start addressing some of the things that we are experiencing here in our region. In our prior experience, it's been in hospital, I see a lot of it on the back end. We want to be on the front end and address this in a proactive way. And our program proposes, we'll bring forward a number of things that will be helpful for this community to understand, and will also help in the addiction treatment space by bringing along a number of services that we believe will be helpful for those who are suffering through addiction. We want to limit the access to the campus at some point in time when we get operational. We want to limit and restrict the access of their private provision of service and provision of care, so we'll make sure that we're doing that. No clients will be there under duress. Individuals will be there as a participant, because they have reached that point in their lives when they need help, and they're coming there electively. We will maintain, and we have established 24-hour security, now just from manpower being on the campus, but through monitoring as well, we'll be 24-hour monitoring through the internet and through the security systems that we're putting in place there. One of the things that I like about the project is that it proposes to protect all the natural occurrences on the campus, so it's a beautiful piece of property. We want to keep it as naturally as we possibly can. The economic values you've heard is brought forth in the MPC presentation, we believe will be bringing forward over 120 employees to that, to that campus. Medically, we picked, we believe, the best in the, in the region to offer medical services to us. We're entering into agreements with LSU School of Medicine, bringing forth the medical director to help serve us at that, at that campus and the related staff at the medical school that will help us bring forth a very good program for the citizens of this community. I introduced the medical director at the MPC, she can be with us again today, but she's a well-known figure in the medical community and well-versed in the addictive medicine space, so we believe that we're bringing forth the best that we can bring forth for this region in this high 20th quarter, so entertain any questions that the council may have.
When you mean repurpose, when you say repurpose, what, what is it, repurpose and from?
So, there's, there's an existing residence there, there's an existing dormitory that's there, and there's an existing common area that will be used for group homes. There's no construction that would take place in that space, but we'll be adding additional dorms for women services there specifically, health and well-being. We'll be adding a gym to the space as well as a volleyball court, but all of those have been agreed to in the, in the MPC presentation, and we're, we'll be in compliance with all of that, so.
Okay, and what, what, who are all, what, the 120 employees, that would consist of?
A number, you know, medical personnel, registered nurses, therapists, you know, food services, you know, environmental services, plant operations, just the full gamut of offerings there, so.
One last question, a question that I got a phone call on, is will a correction facility, be able to send someone to that facility for, for their sentence or anything like that? Do I accept those kinds of...
Well, you know, we will scholarship individuals, this will be set up as a private institution, so we're, you know, full funding with the health insurance programs, et cetera. We will scholarship individuals in that space as well, so a limited number, but yes.
And incarceration?
No.
No criminal...
No, not, none, none whatsoever. That's good.
I have a question. Are those two homes, the front 70th Street, are those private homes or is that part of the facility?
That's a private home that will be repurposed as a part of the...
There's two of them.
Right.
Okay.
Right, they'll be repurposed as a part of the project here.
Yeah.
The 6319 address is the address that will be repurposed. The one on the, at the corner of, of the Clark Pines, right there, is a private residence and will not be a part of the project.
Mr. Bradford, are you talking about the two tracks that are in the northwest corner of this, or, I mean, in the...
Yeah, there's two, like on Clark Pines. They're about a block past Clark Pines. Is that, am I looking at the wrong part?
I think you're looking at, I think you should be looking at the northwest corner...
Okay, I got you.
Right, that's, that's correct.
The development, those tracks are staying in...
That's correct.
Residential homes, right?
That's correct, yes.
And then the lots, I'll call them the tracks that are kind of in the middle that actually front 70th are the ones you're converting.
That's correct, yes.
And then, three or four tracks to the west of your property are staying residential, right?
That's, that's correct, that's correct.
Got it.
Thank you.
And, yeah, I just wanted to make sure I was correct on one more thing, and I could bring this up later, but I'll go ahead and do it now. The behind, did the owner purchase a home, some of the homes of, some of the land that's behind the, how many homes is it behind there?
I think you're talking about the buffers, huh? They've got a big buffer on it, as part of what I read on the...
It's a 300 feet, it's a 300 feet buffer around the property.
It's like a natural barrier that they maintain, but they're doing, doing a fence as well?
Right, it's a 10-foot fence that will consider the entire perimeter of the, of the property.
That's fixed along with the fence, that's, that's there now.
Yeah, it will be, it will still, all around the entire property, the 10-foot fence, and the natural, you know, observation will still be in place.
So, the fence will go, it's not an option, the fence will go?
It will go, that's great, and we've agreed to that in the amenities from the MPC.
You're talking about these ones right here, right? Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairperson, I would just like to say, I was invited to take a tour, and I did go out to this facility with Mr. Mrs. Fadell, and it's a beautiful facility and it's, you know, away from everybody. There is a natural barrier, but the home, it's their home that they're giving up, but it is, I think, something they sorely needed in the community, but it is, it is beautiful, landscape, everything, it's just gorgeous for those people who really need that hand up. I just wanted to say that.
Okay, thank you.
Let me do, I'm just waiting, what would be the, as it relates to patients, what's the, what's the capacity of the patient that would be there at any one time?
So, anytime, only, we'll ramp up, obviously, we'll start with full capacity. If that happens, that will be, certainly, we'll prepare for that. The maximum capacity would be 90.
90?
Yes, that's the maximum capacity there.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney.
Thank you.
Mr. Gerald Fadell, the same thing. Take your name and address, please.
Gerald Fadell, 6319 West 70th Street. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Honorable City Council. I just was making myself available, if there's any questions that I can answer. Mr. Williams pretty much gave all the information that, that we have, but, you know, our utmost is the safety, quality of life on the, on the west side of Shreveport, continue that and to keep stepping that up as most as possible, so that's what we're looking to do with this project, to bring excellence to West 70th Street. So, any questions that I could answer or help?
I have one, Mr. Fadell.
Yes, sir.
Is there any particular faith-based organization associated specifically with you? Not saying there needs to be or anything, but a lot of these have, you know, conjunction with a faith-based entity, is there a specific one?
There's not a specific one, no, sir.
Okay, steady carrying on.
Yes, sir.
It's a unique project, Mr. Fadell, and again, I have also visited the site and very impressed with the layout of the grounds as it is now. What, again, what motivated you to go into this area? I mean, it's a needed area, but my understanding of your background did not have this as one of your, one of your interests?
No, sir, my background is 30 years of construction, heavy industrial construction and oilfield service work. This came through a personal experience of mine, through an accident that I was prescribed hydrocodone and found myself addicted to it, and went through a process, went to a facility for treatment. It, you know, when, I had some of the best insurance and I had resources to find a facility, and it took me about five days to find, with multiple people helping, to find a place to go to. So, as I, as I went and I went to, had to go to South Florida, of all places, and I found that the need was, you know, that when you have resources, you know, that, to find a place, it's that hard. And then when I went through it, I fell in love with it, and I saw that, you know, that it's, you know, it's the exact opposite of what you think, it's, it's more people that are professionals and, and, you know, working people and just every type of person you could think of, and I, you know, if, if you have, if you have something like we have out there and the experience that I went through and what I was given back to get my sobriety, and if I had the opportunity to give it back and bring that type of resource home here to our region, you know, that we like to call the capital of the architects, shame on me if I don't, if I don't try everything to bring this home to us, because it's, you know, when, when you find yourself in a trap like that and you are looking for somewhere to go and you can't find somewhere to go, it's just, it's, you know, you know, they say in the news that it's an epidemic, I looked at more that it's a pandemic, what's going on, it's just, it's more and more people that are finding themselves in a trap, they can't get out, so it's just my own personal experience to give back and to be a part of this. And, you know, like you say, that's not my background, so we've surrounded ourselves with, I like to say, the best of the best to complement this area and this region, to bring world-class services and to create the gold standard of recovery here in the architects.
Thank you for that noble expression of your personal endurance, but, so, a facility like this is not already available in this area?
There is, I think, you know, that, you know, it, with limited bed spaces anywhere around the country, I mean, we could build 10 of these and there's not enough beds, there's not enough space, you know, and there's just not enough space, and yes, there's quality treatment around here, and I applaud everything that everybody's doing around here, I don't think, I think we could, we couldn't build enough to help with what's going on right now, it's, it's just, the facility I was in was 76 clients, and it was a continual, there was never, you know, it was like, it was like having a hotel room on Super Bowl weekend, it was, I mean, it was, you know, they were checking out, they were checking right back in, it was, it was crazy, it was just, you know, it was just continual people coming, and that just, you know, was alarming to me that, you know, you never thought that it was... thought that it was, you know, really until you, until you saw it firsthand, so, uh, I think that it's just that, you know, the, 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 to give as, as, as much bed space as we can to, to combat this epidemic.
Sir, thank you for your remarks, if, I did not necessarily intend to get personal, but I appreciate, especially that, that, that experience.
No, you know, it's, you know, the, the, the biggest part about this is the stigmatism, you know, that, uh, that, uh, and that was the, one of the first things that started me, is that, you know, that if, if you don't stand up and say that you, that you fought this, you know, um, it's, it's, it's for me to, 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 to do my part to, to, to give back and to, and to speak for the people that can't speak for themselves, that, that are embarrassed to speak for themselves, it's, it's, it's tearing down the walls and the barriers of, of the stigmatism addiction, so thank you, Council.
Thank you, sir, thank you very much.
One last, uh, you think?
Yes?
One last, uh, and, and it's just, I'm sure you've probably got a, uh, more, a few oppositions, so, uh, I pose this question here, why that particular location?
Why that location? I think that it, it fits everything, that, you know, like, we, we, we addressed that, you know, we're repurposing the facility, it is a facility that is, you know, that, that we thought that we were, what it was going to be used for one thing when we, when we started out this, you know, uh, ten, twelve years ago, it's, you know, it is, it's, it's built, you know, it is, uh, it's there, and, you know, now, that, you know, you can have the greatest facilities and the greatest landscape and the greatest, uh, um, piece of property, um, but really and truly what I think it is, it's the, it's the people that sit in this community, the professionals, uh, the, the help, the staff, our neighbors, um, this council, uh, everything that'll be, that'll, that will pour into that facility, our faith-based communities, that, that, you know, it's not just one, it's multiple that will, that will pour into this, and it's just the people that, that really I think, you know, that are going to make the difference here, and that's why that piece is, because it's because of our, our great city that we have here, um, that it-
That's, that's, so I have, appreciate it, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Good, thanks, thank you.
I have, uh, Apostle Stephen Newton, my friend, I didn't say him, still not there, on, uh, police overtime.
Good evening, everyone, protocol has been established, and so, just go with some notes that I've been asked to, uh, to share. Stephen Newton, sixty-one fifteen Canal Boulevard, yes, sir. All righty, um, I'm affectionately called the son of the city, born and raised in Ellendale, moving throughout Lakeside, Ingleside, and Sunset Acres, I'm a product of this very community, graduating from Fat Park High School, where at the time, the current Chief of Police was our campus security officer, uh, spending over a decade defending our freedom in this nation's military and combat, I'm very concerned, uh, at what I see in our city, with all of the killings in our local community, I believe these are economic, neurological, psychological, and emotional disputes that can't be solved as a pastor in our city with dancing and shouting in church and concerts. Uh, I hope we can agree that our city needs life-changing community, innovation, creativity, and reformation, we can't sit and continue to act like, for many of us, these results are over the last six months, um, of our election, this economic disparity has been looking us in the face for, I would say, eight to ten years, and for many, some of our, um, city officials have reached out and said for twenty to thirty years, uh, screaming for our attention, overly dedicated children who were not taught the disciplines of personal, personal development have become students who, with these issues left unaddressed, have no regard to life or one another, their own, no skill sets in conflict resolution, beyond programs that are operational as long as there is a grant to fund it, being afraid to progress and stretch beyond the norm because of the fear of unknown has backfired. Working two to three jobs, part-time with no benefits, to supplement one full-time job with benefits is something, yes, but it only leaves children without the parent's presence or financial employment to raise them, so, uh, employment was not at an all-time high as we were told in our scandal-free administration. Uh, a depleting social security system has caused our grandmothers and grandfathers to have to return to work, so they aren't available to raise them either, depleting because our generation, my generation, was taught that we were prideful if we didn't accept government assistance, and now we have twenty-one to forty-one-year-old able-bodied, healthy citizens refusing to take employment and progress for the sake of receiving social security checks from a system they have yet to contribute to. Consequently, Madea and Pawpaw must go back to work to welcome us to Walmart, so we have been left with a generation that was left to raise themselves at the helm of television, video games, and government assistance. I've been in barber shops and beauty salons throughout our city over the years, trying to admonish our people to unthink from the ways in which they have been programmed to think, to rewire our mindsets and change our direction for living, pastors and community leaders alike called me crazy. Now we are burying this generation every weekend in an alarming way, my church sits next to a federal home, and, uh, because it is a business, they use the term over-stopped with our babies and our victims. Now I think that's crazy and demonic at its core, I can remember sharing these sentiments at a roundtable a couple of years ago here in Shreveport with pastors and civic leaders, and the pastor in our city, in an attempt to rebuke me, responded with, "The church will continue to do what it has been doing."
Your time has expired, nobody objects, we'll continue one moment.
Thank you, sir. Well, now we get to experience the results of their response, at this point, life is going to force the change that our city would not do voluntarily. I have some ideas for my beautiful city, ideas in sports, academics, fashion, media, economics, business, health and wellness, that we've been initiating without government assistance for the past seven years, this is the reason I got out of the army, came back to help, took the risk of being disliked, criticized, ostracized, and demonized because I knew this day would come. I'm looking forward to sitting down with any of you to share some of our initiatives that we've already been actively addressing, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, that concludes our public comments, did they?
Mr. Chair, we have no, uh, appointments to confirm today, not on the regular agenda, uh, if there's anything else, we are on the agenda.
We miss one.
We're missing one. Okay, I believe we had one more to need to speak. Did you turn your slip in? Okay, I'm sorry, you have to get a slip in the back of the, before you turn it in to the clerk. That's all right, you, you come on forward and give us your name, but you'll need to complete the slip, okay, but come on, let's speak. Okay, thank you. It's an agenda item? It's a, uh, wh, wh-
I'm sorry?
Which agenda item, we just, I wanted to ask because-
From the resilient house?
Oh, okay.
And, yes, sir, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
That's okay.
My name is Carolyn Badley, and I'm a retired, uh, employee for the Department of Justice, and this is my hus-
Just spin, just one, to remind you, three, three minutes.
Okay, well, let, okay.
Okay, I'm sorry, go.
Let me, you're right, let me get to the point, I am, um, I live in the Steefer Chase community, where, uh, they are considering having the resilient house, and, uh, I am truly opposed to the resilient house being placed there, uh, and reason being, I, I do know that we do need, uh, drug and alcohol, uh, facilities in our area, but I, I truly feel that they should be in isolated areas, and the reason I'm opposed, one of the reasons that I'm opposed to this is that once, uh, I, we, we met, uh, I spoke with some people, we, we met with the planning, we were at the planning commission's, uh, meeting, and we found out that the, uh, the establishment of the resilient house had been, had been in plan for like ten months, however, we received as official notice, we received a letter on May thirty-first from our, uh, association, and, an official letter, and, well, the letter was dated, I'm sorry, May thirty-first, and if, the meeting, we received it on June third, the meeting for the planning commission was on the seventh, and that was our first, uh, time knowing about the resilient house being placed, and other than, uh, we were told that there were, uh, crawfish balls and parties and meetings, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, but officially, the neighborhood wasn't notified, we went ra, around to other neighbors, and we presented ourselves before the planning commission, however, to be honest with you, it seemed as though the decision was made when we came before the planning commission, based on how the commission acted toward, uh, when people, uh, when, when we brought forth our opposition, and so, I'm just trying to ask the, the city council to look into this thing, my husband and I both have worked with the Department of Justice together sixty years, I understand, uh, uh, that a facility such as this is needed, however, uh, I was listening to Mr. Fadel, Mr. Williams, and the capacity of how mu, you know, what this facility will hold, but you have to realize, and we've been watching TV, there's a huge problem with opioid and, and drug addiction in, in the state, and if a judge orders inmates or whatever to be placed in that facility, that will, the facility would have to take those inmates, and so we're talking about all facet of inmates, et cetera, being placed in this facility, placed in our neighborhood, and there would be nothing they could do, my job, uh, in, when I was working for the department, I was a case analyst, so that was what I did, I placed inmates, I followed them through the court systems, I placed them in facilities such as, uh, the resilient house, and regardless of what is said, I know Mr. Fadel is saying, you know, he was addicted, and my heart goes out to him, Mr. Williams, he, he worked in a hospital, but if a judge orders any type of inmate to go into one of those facilities, they are going, I do not care, and we would not be able, they would not be able to do anything, and, and in order to qualify, last but not least, I know my time has expired, last but not least, if, uh, in order to qualify, this person could be a sex offender, a murderer, a thief, as long as he has a drug and alcohol background, he can be accepted, so I would just, I would, uh, peace to the, uh, council to really reconsider this, and we have a lot of elderly individuals in our neighborhood where, who were not able to come, uh, before the council, and not only that, there were-
Time has expired.
Okay, thank you.
What was your address, sir, I didn't get your address?
Seven four zero three Pressberry Court.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
I didn't, I didn't fill out the, uh, the slip either.
Well, be sure you do. Okay.
My name is Marvin Badley.
You have three minutes, sir.
Thank you very much, sir, uh, thank you very much, my name is Marvin Badley, I also live at seven four zero three Pressberry Court, uh, my wife did quite, quite a job explaining, uh, what our position is, what we believe, uh, one of the things I'd, I'd like to, uh, to mention, and, uh, not to, to besmirch anybody, not to, not to appear insulting, but, uh, uh, on our previous meeting with the commissioner, there were more people in opposition, or there were more people that were present, and, uh, and they're not present today, uh, for whatever reason, but I believe that one of the reason was that, at that commissioner's, uh, meeting, uh, one of the members of the panel, uh, spoke their opinion, and, uh, it seems as though that if you're on the, on the panel, you speak your opinion, you're allowed to do that, that that's fine, but it seems as though that they were persuading their other members, and it was discouraging to the other people that were in opposition, and I would just like to, I'd just like to, uh, address that issue, that the, the panel remained fair, that those people in opposition that came to the meeting would like to, that would have, would have liked to have said something, would not be discouraged, and, and not to think that the panel, panel's mind was made up before we even spoke, that's all I have to say, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Please state your name, the address, you have three minutes.
Thank you, I'm Tammy Yuzey, I live at sixty-five thirty-two Lowlet Lane in Shreveport, and I am product of West Shreveport, I represent West Shreveport, I was born at Hearn Avenue Hospital, lived in Western Hills my whole life, and now reside at Lowlet Lane, which is still West Shreveport, went to Lincoln High School, so I am for my city, never have left, and I, I know these people dearly, I love them dearly, that, and so I'm in full support of this resilient house and all that I know it's going to do for our community, but not just our community, I'm talking about the whole, the whole United States, anyone around this whole United States, if they can be a part of it, they, they can come get their life changed, and, but I've watched Jerry and Chrissy serve this city the way they have since they've moved here, they've given their life already, in, in the nine or ten years that they've been here, so I know that everything they do is with excellence, it's with, um, knowing that God will use whatever they do, and so this is going to be something that, um, I know will make a difference, know with all my heart it will, so I'm in full support of it, thank you.
Good afternoon, my name's Melissa Anderson, twenty-nine eleven Paradise Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana, um, I moved here, um, in two thousand and five, I'm not a native of Shreveport, and I've worked with the population of Shreveport, um, in a nonprofit capacity for ten years, and I've seen, um, the jobs that are needed in our city, I've worked in that, um, in that capacity for over nine years, um, I, I currently hold a real estate license and serve my s, city in that capacity, and I have just seen the work of the Fadels, I've toured the facility, I know what our city needs, I know the reputation that our city has, and the things that our city can do as far as, um, just it is a place to start over, it's a place that people can come, I know what it's been to my family and to my life, and I'm just in support of Resilient House, I'm in support of the efforts that, that they don't just put forth, but that they communicate, not what they're, what will be done, um, just, but how great it will be done, they don't speak just vain words, but they, they are, power behind their words, and they do what they say they're going to do, and, um, I think it's a great thing for our city.
Good afternoon, my name is Kristen Davidson, I live at sixty-three twenty-nine West Seventieth Street, my house is right in front of the proposed property for the Resilient House project, I love my house, I love where I live, I love the neighborhood, when I first heard of the idea for the Resilient House project, I immediately thought that it would be a great addition to our community, the treatment center will bring jobs to our area while helping people who really need the help, as a nurse, I see people who struggle with addiction daily, and I feel it's very important to have a safe haven for these people who really need it in our community, my house is so close to the Resilient House project house that it's practically in the front yard, and I plan on staying there, even after it opens, I really believe that this project will be a wonderful addition to our community, thank you for your time.
That's all I had to speak on that subject. Final call, does everybody sign up to speak?
I didn't sign up, I didn't sign up.
Yes, we'll, we'll allow, but please sign up, okay?
Did you have next week as well?
My name is Craig Johnson, I live at sixty-three twenty-five West Seventieth Street, we opened this meeting praying and asking God to guide us and to lead us, when we look into the heart of God, the most important thing to God is saving the lost, He sent His Son to do that. He sent His Son to do that. The Resilient House purpose is to do that same thing. Our city has a reputation for crime. There's too much of it. None of us wants this in our city. None of us wants to see people hurting. This project, I believe, will open the doors for those that are hurting, who sit in darkness, who are bound by chains of addiction that they cannot break by themselves. They'll need professional help. This project will bring that professional help. It is a beautiful facility. It's a private area. And I think the worst thing we could do is take the attitude to say, "Not here, somewhere else." Every community that feels like that and thinks like that will have that same opinion. Not here, somewhere else. Where will those people go? I think it is here and now. This is the city. This is the place. This is the time. They have the team. They have the resources. They have the heart for it. And I think it will be a shame if we do not allow this project to go forward and help the people who need so much help. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I have William Burnside.
Good afternoon. My name is William Burnside. I reside at sixty-one fourteen Amosia Drive in Shreveport, Louisiana. This subject a pretty touching subject to me, the resilient house. Number one, just the word alone, resilient. Somebody want the opportunity to bounce back. Somebody wanted opportunity to step forward. But more than that, it made me think about family, me being a father. That, I stated this the last time, and I stick to what's true. Anytime that you can get a mother or father off of drugs and they get rehabilitated and go back to their family, that's a win-win situation. And to be opposed to that, for whatever reason, it just need to be re-analyzed, looked upon again to the betterment of the city, the betterment of the family. Because it could very well have been, could have been me. I would love to have stayed here in Shreveport to be rehabilitated versus going to West Florida, East Florida, or where Mr. Fidel had to attend. Because that mean I would have been definitely separated from our family, who would have spent a huge amount of money to try to visit me whenever the visitation was allowed to them to do so. But here in, one of the impact that give me so much is that everybody have their focus on Shreveport, but this is going to be abroad. There's people in New York that may want to attend this facility to get help. There's people in Chicago. Well, I heard someone approached me in the weight room saying that, you know, they live in Mr. Fidel's backyard. Well, I visit the property as well. I didn't see anybody house in the backyard. And got a pretty good vision. So, if you call the backyard behind security fence, and they even talk about installing more fence ten feet tall, well, that's not in the backyard. And for us living next to someone that you don't agree with, I don't always agree with my neighbor. I can't make them move. I try to get along with the neighbor. The gentleman stated earlier, "God came to serve them that are lost." Now, we turn our back on the one that are lost, I mean, we pretty much speaking pretty high volume, even without saying anything. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. I have two more questions. This is, and we are not, not a vote today. I want to make sure that we, everybody understand that for their Mary Payne.
Good evening. My name is Mary Payne, and I live sixty-one oh eight Debbie Street, Shreveport. I just wanted to say, I've been on the Fodels for like seven and a half years. I come from Missouri. I have a thirty-one-year-old son that's there. He's on drugs. He asks his mom for help. With the resilient house, the house, I can bring care from St. Louis, and I can save my son, my only son. So, I'm asking if we can get this started, we're backing the Fodels up and getting this rehabilitation center started. That'd be the first family, my family saved, out of my five kids. My son that's on all different type of drugs, almost died two or three times. And when he asks his mom for help, and I don't know where to go, but when the dormitory was offered, asked a place I used to work at for the Fodels, and found out that they was turning it into rehab, that's when I start thanking God. So, now I know that there will be at least one, right now, life saved. So, I thank you. I pray that this go through, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Captain. State your name and address, whatever it is.
Three minutes. Good evening, everyone. My name is Felton Sneed, and the address is seventy-sixteen Steeplechase Plaza, almost in walking distance from the resilient house. I am a retired federal investigator. Twenty-nine years. I've seen it all. I came to Shreveport as a result of losing my home in Katrina, and I came here fighting a battle to make things better. I also represent the Steeplechase Baptist Church. I represent a private business, and I represent a nonprofit organization here in the city of Shreveport. Having the resilient house could be and will be one of the best things that could happen to the city of Shreveport. Every twelve hours, a life is lost because of an accident in the general Shreveport area. Most of it is because of what the resilient house could solve. We have visited the resilient house. We've gone there for a number of community activities already. It is already having a tremendous impact on this community. We fully support it. We fully endorse it. And beyond the shadow of a doubt, we would like for you to support the resilient house because it means a better community for the city of Shreveport and for the state of Louisiana. Thank you kindly.
Thank you.
Good afternoon to the mayor, to the commissioners. My name is Lily Fortenberry. I reside at twenty-four twenty-two Somersworth Drive. I'm a member of the Steeplechase Baptist Church. I met Gerald when, one day, when he came to our midday service, and he told us his story. And it just touched me. It touched my heart. Because if any of you, and most of us, have family members that have had to deal with drugs, and I'm here to tell you, he touched me so when he told his story, because he didn't have to share that, but he did. And I thank God for him and his wife, Kristen, and the work and the effort that they're bringing to our community, and the jobs that they're bringing to our community, the positiveness that they show in our community, the work that they are doing. I thank God for each one of them. And when you vote, I pray to God that you can, that you vote and approve the resilient house, because it's going to be a blessing, not only to Shreveport, but all of our surrounding area and father. I thank you. God bless.
The introduction. Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Chairman, we're down to consent agenda legislation. We have several items on the consent agenda resolution, one fifteen, one sixteen, one seventeen, one eighteen, one nineteen, one twenty-two. These can be adopted by-
Move for the consent agenda adoption.
Discussion, just quickly. What I'd be interested in seeing is, on some of the fact sheets that we have, if we're accepting donation or dedication of infrastructure, if we could put the projected cost of maintenance of that infrastructure on that fact sheet over the lifetime of that infrastructure, is what I would like, to have included on a fact sheet in the future. And I don't know if we need to, if we, if there's some action we need to take, but I mean, if I could, if there's something that's available, it would be helpful to have it. And it can be an estimate.
I, I, we can only give you the best estimate. You know, it's going to depend on prices and increased cost of living and those kinds of things.
Obviously, it would just be an estimate, but that would still be helpful. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Cannot get on the board.
Yes, trying, but it definitely not work. Okay. So, very similar to that, and maybe this would be another way to do it, but I'm certainly interested in these figures. Whatever figure that we use per square mile, square foot, square, because I'm doing another project that I have a college student working on for me, and I'm looking at kind of the life and expense of infrastructure. And I've got some figures, but I don't have them for Shreveport. And to do what Jeff is asking, you would need to know that for Shreveport, so I'd love to know what those figures are so I can use for my project, if that makes sense. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Please vote.
I'm voting yes. Just want to make that clear.
You still not? And a next.
Mr. Chairman, we're down to regular general legislation, resolutions on secondary and final passage. The first is resolution one hundred and nine, it authorizes execution of a cooperative endeavor agreement between KDBS LLC and the city of Shreveport.
So, move, Mr. Chairman. Second. Motion by Councilman Bradford, second by Vice Chairman. Any discussion? Please vote. And a response.
Resolution one ten, states the city of Shreveport's endorsement of Market Street, Shreveport LLC, the Chris Bayden family, so the Louisiana restoration tax agreement program is not being postponed until July eleventh.
Oh, so move. Second.
Motion by Councilman Everston, second by-
Oh, but I'm sorry, this is resolution one ten?
Yeah.
And, and I mean, I move to postpone it, because we need one more public hearing. So, I'm sorry.
That's what he said.
Thank you. Sorry. I just wanted to make sure I was moving to postpone it, not to, not for passage.
I'm saying you need to postpone it.
No further discussion, please vote.
I'm voting yes.
Okay.
Resolution one eleven, authorizes a mandatory execution and acceptance of an act of donation between the city and AS one thirty, Camp Thorpe and Marketplace LLC.
Second. Counselman Corbin. Second by Councilman Bradford. Any discussion? Would you please vote?
Resolution one twelve, authorizes a mandatory execution and acceptance of the act of donation between the city, Briscoe Properties LLC, for the private streets, drainage, and water improvements located in Long Lake twenty-two and related facilities.
So move. Motion by Councilman Corbin, second by Councilman Bradford. Yes, sir. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion is approved.
Resolution one fourteen, authorizes a mandatory execution and intergovernmental agreement and/or cooperative endeavor agreement between the city and the town of Glen.
So move. I have a motion by Councilman Everston to have a second. Second by Vice Chairman Bowman. Any discussion? Please. Motion is approved.
We're down to introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to July the eleventh. One twenty, authorizes the execution of a cooperative endeavor agreement. One twenty-one, authorizes a mandatory accept an in-kind donation of a gazebo and landscaping value at nine two thousand thirty dollars to be constructed in Oakland Cemetery from the Oakland Cemetery Preservation Society of the city of Shreveport.
So move for introduction of- I have a motion by Councilman Everston to have a second. Second by Councilman. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion is approved.
We're down to the introduction of ordinances. We have several, ordinance sixty-nine, events of twenty seventeen capital improvements budget. Ordinance seven, events of twenty seventeen general budget. Ordinance seventy-one is a zoning matter, case number C dash fifty dash seventeen. It amends chapter one oh six of the code by resulting property located on the south side of West Seventieth, two hundred and ninety-five feet west of Long Times Road, from R one D, Urban One Family Residence District, and R one D E, Urban One Family Residence Extended Use District, to R one D P, and as Urban One Family Residence Plan Unit Development District.
Do you have a motion?
We've still got one more.
And ordinance number seventeen, seventy-two is a zoning matter, case number C dash seventy-five dash sixteen. It resides property located on the east side of Monkhouse Drive, one thousand six hundred women and people north of Livers Street, from B one, C one, under the UDC Business District, Buffer Business District, to B two, which will be C two, under the UDC, which is a main of the business district.
So move for introduction. Second. Second, but we have discussion. Discussion. Motion by Councilman Everston, second by Councilman Bradford, and call for discussion. Councilman Bradford.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman, I'm going to reference back to ordinance seventy-one, and I need to ask Mr. Sweeney, who's in the room, a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Sweeney, thank you for coming up. Couple of questions. You heard the discussion, sir, regarding this from the residents. It was alleged that proper notice wasn't given. Can you explain if proper notice was given for this, for this application?
Sure. By state law, we're required to place notice in the, in the newspaper of a pending zoning case or change, and that's what we did. We then put out signs on the property to indicate for people that drive by, that they know a zoning change is occurring. And as a courtesy, not by state law, we sent out a, a letter of notification to the property owners within three hundred feet of the property. And those letters go out based upon who is on the tax rolls at that time as the official owner. So, I'm not certain whether or not this property owner was within the three hundred feet, and if the information went out. It went out according to what we normally do, which is we send those out well in advance of the actual public hearing.
So, the proper notification was not altered at all?
No, sir. We did exactly the same way we do all notifications and have done for the last many years.
And it appears Pressberry Court is outside, outside three hundred feet.
Was it? Okay. Well, nevertheless, in regards to the UDC meeting itself.
Right.
Was everybody given opportunity to make expressions?
Absolutely. In fact, that was a very lengthy meeting, one of our longer public hearings. And everyone had, was given an opportunity to express their support or their opposition to this case and explain why.
It was stated, Sweeney, and maybe you could respond or not respond, that it appeared that the decision was made before the meeting even started. Do you have any information regarding that?
No, sir. What I always tell my commissioners is that always maintain an open mind, to be open to all the comments and concerns. They take into consideration of the staff report and the analysis that we've done, but we never ask them to make any pre-decisions on any cases that would be illegal. That assumption is an assumption, because there was- and that's the decision they made based upon the facts.
So that was full and complete transparency in this discussion?
Yes, sir.
What was the vote, Sweeney?
The vote, I believe, was, and I'm not looking at it here in front of me, but I think it was unanimous, I think nine to zero.
I think it says eight to zero.
Um, eight to zero. I think we had one person. I think we had one person that was missing that day. Okay. Couldn't remember. So it was unanimous based on who was present.
And a lot of information that was shared with us was shared with that body.
That is correct.
And they came to that conclusion.
That is correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Since you're up here, if you're down.
I am, thank you.
Okay. Obviously, the M P C had a similar use on a different developments a month ago or whatever.
That's correct.
And they voted differently.
Yes.
And I'm assuming it's a site is better suited in their mind, but what, why do you, what's your professional opinion, why the other one did not pass and this one did pass?
That would be hard to say because it's hard for me to be able to say what each individual commissioner's thoughts were when they voted, and I would, I would not want to go into that because I don't think that that would be appropriate from my perspective. I mean, we recommend approval of both cases, and both cases were very, very similar, which is a few little differences. The previous case with the Shreveport Country Club involved the development of a future single-family development. This one does not, but they both included a drug rehab facility in a pastoral setting adjacent to vibrant neighborhoods who have an active voice and are very vocal about their concerns about their community. So we had, both cases were almost like mirror images. The difference may have been the fact, and I, I have to give Mr. Delaney and Mr. Fodeal a lot of credit for this, their outreach to the neighborhood was exceptionally good. Now, that doesn't mean they talked to everyone. I don't think anyone can talk to everyone, but they made a very concerted effort to do a very good public outreach to the neighborhood, the adjacent property owners, and I feel like that may have been one of the factors that determined that outcome. You had a much more divided camp of, with the Shreveport Country Club situation. There was a lot more opposition there than there is in this case. I cannot say that's the reason why they voted differently, but that is the difference between the two cases.
And from a site plan specific, Jeff brought up to me that the fact that the, I'll say, interest into the facility is not really through a neighborhood, it is more from a major.
Yes.
Corridor, and so maybe that wasn't as obtrusive to the neighborhood.
That's a very good point.
And that.
Excellent point.
And I'm not, you know, he has background in that, you know, he's not flying an F-18, so I know much about it, so I'll just say that aside, but, so he pointed that out to me, but I was surprised that there was just such a difference in the voting, but I think there are some similarities, but also some significant differences in the site plan specifically and its location.
Yes.
So just point that out.
No, that's, I think that's a very valid point. It's hard, the formula that goes into something being eventually approved is often more complicated than people realize. Our position as the M P C staff is just to lay the facts out, give what we think is the best recommendation, and then allow the board to make their decision based upon all of the facts and all of the details within the context of other situations that may affect them, much the same way you guys do. So it's the same concept.
And, you know, just for the record, obviously, we didn't end up voting on that because it was withdrawn.
Yes.
Yeah, we came close.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm finished, thank you.
Let me, let me follow with another question. In observing the layout, we seem to be very secure as relates to.
Yes, sir.
The demographics of it. Was there any discussion in the M P C meeting regarding security and safety?
Yes, sir. In each of those cases, that issue came up. And I like to say this, and I may be wrong to say this, but I'll say it anyway. I kind of viewed both of these facilities as, and I'll show my age, more like a Betty Ford clinic, which me, which means we're talking about people that typically will have pretty good incomes to be able to go to a facility like this, very top-quality service, and so, and you have a top-notch environment. And so, you know, a lot of folks ask that question, but the reality is, is that, yes, you want security, but it's more or less an attempt just to simply protect the neighborhood, and in this case, that's what they did. They created the natural buffer, they proposed to do the ten-foot screening fence with the whole intention of being a really good neighbor to the existing residential area. And so, I don't think it's so much of an issue of someone escaping over into the neighborhood creating havoc. I don't think that scenario will play itself out. I would not expect that. But I think from a security perspective, I think it's, it creates a sense of, of comfort for the neighborhood to know that there is something of a barrier, and I think from a value to those properties, that helps them as well. And so, I think it's just indications of being a good neighbor, provide those amenities, those added pluses, so that you will be guaranteed that this facility, whether it changes hands in the future or not, will always be a good neighbor to those residences.
And let me follow, Mr. Williams, if you will. In regards to your clients or patients, would they be anytime unsupervised where they could leave the property?
No, no, sir. I mean, the way it's structured and the way the treatment modalities are, it's, it's very rigorous in terms of what they will be going through, so it's very structured day, and you know, there's, at no time will it be unsupervised. Again, people have come to us because they will be there because of their own choosing, not because of any direct, so, you know, they will always be supervised and always be monitored medically, clinically, therapeutically as well, because they'll always be at home moment of time when all the clients there are going to be monitored.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Thank you, Ms. Sweeney.
You have another question, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
All good. Everybody good? Let's vote. And a motion passed.
Mr. Chairman, we're not in a regular agenda legislation. Resolutions on second reading and final passage. Ordinance sixty-six declares certain city property to be surplus.
So move. Second. Motion by Councilman Jenkins, second by Councilman Corbin. Any discussion? Please vote. And a motion passed.
Ordinance sixty-seven concerns the lease of city-owned property along Star Coaches. This needs to be postponed.
Move for postponement. Second. Motion by Councilman Bradford, second by Councilman Jenkins. Any discussion? Please vote. Okay, motion passed.
Ordinance sixty-eight amends a twenty-seventeen budget for the general fund.
Second. Motion by Councilman Jenkins, second by the chair. Any discussion? Please vote. And the motion passed.
Mr. Chairman, those are all of the matters on the regular agenda. I'm not aware of any matter on the table. The general needs to be removed.
Okay.
There are no appeals to be taken up at this time, at this meeting.
Okay. Are there any reports from officers, boards, or committees?
No, just, I like to say we had a good, a very good and informative public safety meeting today on the subjects that I think made a lot of people aware of, asked some questions that they wanted to know, so.
And it was very exciting having Councilman Jenkins there today. Though he's not a, though he's not a member, his presence was overwhelming. So, buddy. Mr. Thompson, does Eric Clutch report?
Just real quick before you move to Art, I did want to ask members of the B four committee to check their calendars. I'd like to call a meeting really, you know, maybe on the, the tenth or the eleventh of July. I think there's several things, maybe on the eleventh, so shooting for the tenth if the room is available. We, we just need to get back together to catch up on a few things, so if y'all could check your calendars for the tenth, let me know what's available. That'd be great.
The mayor made several appointments, some to the Shreveport Implementation and Redevelopment Authority. You heard from all of them yesterday, Ms. Christine Brown, attorney, Shannery Fleming's.
Shannery.
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 Fleming's, Mr. Alfred Varnell Johnson, Jr., and Mr. Justin Sevier. She also made a appointment to Shreveport Airport Authority, Mr. Jonathan Remus, and as I said, you heard from all of them yesterday. They will be on your next agenda for confirmation.
Okay. Additional communications from the mayor?
None, thank you, sir.
Any additional communications from council members?
The chairman, I have one.
Okay, the town's Bradford. There's a one or two?
Two.
Okay.
Put him on the clock?
That ain't famous, Jim. Maybe, Mr. Thompson, did we get any feedback from the policy of ordinance on gated communities? Gates being closed during business hours?
Yes, sir. Under the ordinance, they're supposed to be open, I said to you, I believe, from seven o'clock in the morning until seven at night or something.
Okay, I, I haven't been in offices to check my emails, but I, but you did feedback recently from the Michigan Board.
Yes, I sent that.
Okay. And the other issue, Mr. Chairman, and I was sort of heart, heart, heartbroken, if you, if you, if you've been keeping up with P O news, and I think Aaron McCarty and Robert Price has been pretty much the catalyst of getting a lot of discussion regarding the crime situation this time, and various people have been on there, various people included some of us, but that was, but they themselves did a five-and-a-half-minute discussion that kind of troubled me, and, and the topic was, can, can the crime situation in Shreveport be turned around? Can it, can it, can it actually be addressed and, and we can eliminate or eradicate this culture that is existing right now? And, and some of the feedback and their statements were very disturbing in that they almost concluded that they didn't think it could, which I unequivocally disagree with. I mean, all problems could be solved, you know, it's just a matter of having the commitment and the resources and the unity of support to, to get it solved. And I just wanted to send a message to, to those two very distinguished individuals that don't, don't jump to conclusions that we cannot solve the problems that we are now facing. It may seem dark right now, but we, 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 the last two days, there's been discussions, there, there have been other, I think, approaches, the mayor expressed, the chief have expressed, and the citizens have expressed. So I think more than anything else, the consciousness of the community is at a level now where they want to participate in this. And, and I'm looking forward to us continuing to work together to, to eradicate this, this culture as well as to make this city a better city for everybody to live, to work, to worship. And, and I don't like the attitude of we can't do nothing about it, and I know we can do something about it, and we will do something about it, and something will be done about it. Which lead me to my last statement, Mr. Chairman, and, and I don't know who can answer this. I got a call from a resident who, who was asking me, they live in, they live in, I saw for her in, Kelso, not Kelso Heights. Anyway, they, they was wondering if they could set up video cameras on the, on the poles at, at both ends of their street. Is there, is there, is there ordinance, or there's something that would hinder that? I don't need to have to have electric box.
Rising investigators already doing it.
Well, I don't.
Depends on who owns the poles.
Okay, but that's not a city issue, or would it be?
They're going to go on the poles.
I mean, I'm sure. I mean, don't, 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 who owns all these poles? Let go.
Some of them are different people. Some of them are different utilities, some of them are city-owned, some of them are privately-owned. Just, I mean, it's, you know, why don't, why don't you, you can give me the information of where they want to put them. I can see, because it may be a question of them having some kind of agreement with the property owner if they want to do that, but, you know, they can't violate anyone's privacy, so there's some concerns that have to be there as well.
Okay.
So if you can, if you can give me some more information, I can look.
I'm going to actually refer the gentleman to you.
That's fine.
And let, and let you talk, but I, I mean, if it's on his, if he put it on his property and he's sticking both ways, then that's, that's, that's another issue. I mean, privacy is not issued ever.
Right, I mean, you know, people put security cameras on the property all the time to look out at the street and just check their property, but it just depends on the purpose and using intent.
But he want to put it on both sides, both ends of, of this street, so anyway, I'm going, I'm going, I'm going to refer him to you.
Okay.
And y'all talk about it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If there are any other council members this time with communication, now, Mr. Vice Chairman, I'm going to ask that you take care of the positive comments, I've got to go and attend a meeting at five.
But before you do, I just wanted to invite, you can speak clearly into the mic, I was told, I wanted to invite everyone to join me and the New Light Tabernacle Church at forty-four, forty-five AmeriRode World Road on July sixth at six thirty for a private, for our city, our local officials, and some of the homeowners, things that we have going on. I want, my anticipation is to have this to be, if not the largest, one of the largest private that Shreveport has had, so I just wanted to invite you out there.
I have Mr. Leonard Streeter. State your name and address, please, Mr. Streeter.
Stop the Violence Challenge twenty seventeen.
Yes, sir. Good evening. My name is Leonard Streeter. Address is going to be thirty-one fifty-two West Law, that is in your district, Councilman. Good evening, Mayor Tyler, members of the council, and the city of Shreveport, I thank y'all for having me. Roughly about ninety days ago, I had a vision of starting my boxing organization, which is a nonprofit organization, and so, as we embark on what's going on in our streets and what's going on with, with our kids, and, and looking at the demographics of the gun violence and murders that are taking place in the city, targeting the young people between the ages of eighteen and twenty-five, I started to do some investigating and started to look at some, some things that were taking place in other metropolitan cities that were having a longer rates of crime and violent crimes and so forth, and I ran across an organization that was doing something similar to what my vision became, and that was Stop the Violence two thousand seventeen, put the guns down, put the gloves on. So what I propose, and what I'm asking for, is just a little help from the city. Being an individual who has dealt with many young men that come from broken families, what I believe the trend of why we are seeing, I'm forty-two years old, okay, and I have a son that is twenty-two, and it has been extremely difficult to keep him safe, to keep him out of arms' way, and to be a father and, and mentor him and, and keep him astray from what's taking place in the streets. And so, this morning, when I look at the news and I see that in five days, there's six shootings, a hit-and-run. a hit-and-run, you know, a young lady that dies from that, that's troubling to me. So what I've learned through my foundation is this right here. I had a troubled team past. And so when I go, and I work out at Billbury Park, and when I go to the park and I train with these young men that I have, what I want to give to them is there's hope. I want to be able to reach out and touch them and say, hey, you know, even if you do run into trouble, you still can rebuild. Even if your dad was not at home, or if your mama was on drugs, or whether it's both of them, I'm here for you, that you can come talk to me. So what I believe is taking place in our communities is this, children without parents, they're raising themselves, they don't know anything but rap music, they're not being, you know, and it's unfortunate, because I believe that all of them, with the technology and the way we try to give them a chance to have a good education, they, I tell all of my children, you are alive, the same, the same, you know, choices as anyone else. So what I'm asking for is this, just some support from the city, just some support for when, you know, this function that I want to take place is going to be, I would prefer it to be at one of the spa recreations, and the only thing that I'm asking for is the support, the blessings of the people in the community. And I need y'all to support me, and that's why I came before y'all today, okay?
I want to be clear, I want to be clear, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
You asking for just our...
The use of maybe the spa facility.
Once you submit your proposal to the administration.
Yes, sir.
And they can, they can address that. But if you just wanted our blessings, you have that.
Okay.
But if you want to utilize some facilities or some other resources, then refer it to the mayor.
Yes, mayor.
Can I ask, just as a, to understand the organization a little bit better, is this like a outgrowth of the program that used to be located at Ingleside Park? There was a boxing program that was over there, and now they had some structural changes?
They did. And, you know, mind me, this is something that's new to me, I'm walking in faith. Guys, let me tell you, I have talked, and, you know, and it's troubling to me, because I've even asked some police officers, what do you guys feel about this? I got some resistance in reference to, well, boxing is somewhat of a violent sport, but may I speak from what I do every day, and that is I train with your mind.
Oh, I was going to say, the boxing program that was at Ingleside was great.
Okay, and see, and I'm still doing, this is new to me.
But it was a very positive.
Right. So what I tell the young men is this, boxing teaches you to think before you react. You have to discipline yourself, and you have to commit to working out. And so what we do is this, every day, you know, we'll pray. We pray, and we have fellowship, we eat together, we do things like that. And a lot of it, what I'm doing, is coming out of my pocket. And, you know, so what someone said is, you know, well, you have to be careful with it, or you're raising money, and I haven't asked for one dollar. The only thing I came before you guys is just saying that, hey, in the future, would I be allotted to, because what I have a vision is this, two guys, you got one over here in Cedar Grove, one over here in Moretown. Before you guys pick your guns up and you want to shoot each other, and then, you know, the first responders come peel you off the street, because see, what I say is this, two lives are lost in that situation. The shooter, he's going to the Louisiana State Penitentiary. Then you have the victim. That is a double negative. And so being that I'm someone that they can relate to, if I need to, as we say, they want to talk and I can get on that level with them, I can tell them, and I can say, hey, man, listen, you know, this is the end result of this, nobody's a winner. You not, you know, because you go run and you're eighteen years old, and you can go down to Max's Pawn Shop and buy an AK-47, does not make you a man. It makes you a coward. And for you to take another person's life, and what's so tragic, this lady the other day that dies in her house in her sleep, that's a heinous malicious crime. This woman went to bed with the intent she was going to get up and live the next day, and her house is shot up, and she dies in her sleep. And I said to myself, my God, is this a movie? Is this really happening in my city? So I'm only one man, you know, and I think collectively, as we get together, if more people step up, you know, I'm a Christian, I go to church, but see, what happens is with the pastors, they're preaching to the choir. But at the end of the day, they go in, and the people are in their houses, but I'm, every day, this is what I do every day, from four to six P M.
Submit this proposal.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think at least from several of us up here, I don't want to speak for everyone, but I think we like your...
Yes, sir. I'm just passionate about it, I don't, you know...
You seem like you've got a great idea, and we appreciate your concern, and look forward to visiting with you some more and see how we can...
Yeah.
All right.
Including, again, the city.
Yes, sir.
Whatever, how, what they can assist and support, contact administration. But we, me personally, would like to, we get your permission.
Yes, sir.
Any personal assistance I can give, I'll be happy to.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Those options.
I appreciate y'all, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your concern.
What's your name and address, Mr. Brown?
Elwood Brown, five-five-one East eighty-second Street. How you doing, Miss Chairman, Miss Mayor, City Councilmen? My concern is several, I'm going to make it real brief. First of all, me and Brother Corbin, we talked the other day, we have a big issue here in the city, I don't know about nobody else, but with those motorbikes and those four-wheelers, that they're riding around, and at first it was all decent, because they was living, they was riding through the neighborhoods, but now they begin to ride down the main streets. And I've almost hit three in myself, and they are not, they're not registered. And what really got me the other day, like I told Brother Corbin, is that that little boy, he couldn't be no more than eight to ten years old, pull out in front of me on Line Avenue, and if I wouldn't have stopped, oh, oh, wouldn't have been too late. And then the other night, going down Linwood, one flying down there, and if I wouldn't have looked to my right. And then on Saturday night, it was two of them flying up and down there with no lights on ahead of them, that if I wouldn't have looked. And it's getting to be a big issue that these young men, and popping willies, and just, you know, totally out of order. And now the police, they all don't know me by now, because I've been calling and calling and calling, and I know they can't sit there. But what can you all do about these people, letting them people buy their stuff, and then they just go out there and just ride around, and we, as a citizen, we have to buy trucks and cars, and we have to make sure it's registered, we have to make sure we have license.
Your councilman actually brought that up in a committee meeting earlier today, and I know that there was some good discussion about how to, how to help that problem. So Councilman Corbin brought that up in a moment.
Yeah, because I talked to him.
Yeah, he did do that, so I know that there's some ongoing discussion about how we can help this situation.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's getting at, and like, last night, they just flying up and down, not running, stopping to stop sign, and like I say, we don't need no camera, because I'm going to be the camera, I'm watching, you know. And speaking out in our neighborhood for the crime and stuff, we can't, what we have to do is quit being afraid to live in our own neighborhoods. This is our neighborhoods, and we have to let people know that we're not going to let people take our neighborhoods. And what happened is, people have went and been like ostriches, hiding out. We got to, we got to let people know, you're not going to take our neighborhoods. And that's why I called, and I'm down here today, and if they see me on TV, so what? You know, because, you know, I'm here speaking out. We got to, we, what are we going to do? Just say, and like, so the police can't be there twenty-four-seven, but something got to be done, brothers and sisters. Because, oh, oh, going to be too late. If I shit in the head, it ain't bringing my sand out.
Mr. Brown, I'm glad you came back today, and we did discuss it in public safety committee meeting, if there are some specific times that you see a lot of this activity occurring, you know, if it is in the evening, if it is six-thirty, seven, something like that, that's useful information to get back to the police department.
Yeah, I texted.
Because they can't be there all the time.
Yeah, I know.
And they're visible, and, and nobody's going to go ride these things around if they see a patrol unit, you know, in the neighborhood. But if it's happening between six and seven, or seven and eight.
Yeah.
Quite often, then we can get that information to SPD, and that will assist them as well.
Yeah, yes, Brother Corbin, I texted, I told, it's between six and seven, and so she's, she's been on her job, but, you know, and then I told where they are at, because see, and not only just, I'm here down for them myself, but see, the neighbors been telling me, and they said, Mr. Brown, can you go, I said, I'm going down there and voice our opinions.
Great.
Thank you.
We're with you.
Thank you.
We're with you.
I'll be back.
We'll be here. We'll be right here.
State your name and address, Mr. Baker, please.
I'm eight-oh-nine Linden Street, Shreveport, seven-eleven, seven-eleven oh four. And I'm here today to seek some assistance from the council with the issue I have with the MPC. Since October of last year, I've been going through a process in trying to get a license in order to start work on a building that I purchased at seventeen-oh-one Marshall and Sixth Street. And since then, every two weeks or so, I submit a site plan back to the MPC, and they'll take a week, two, sometimes three weeks, and they'll send it right back to me with an era, or something they want added to it. And as I said, this has been going on since last year. The thing is, I was patient the first three or four months of this, and then it got to the point where it was obvious to me that when I submitted my application, the same items that I were told that I didn't have to worry about are coming back to me to be added to the site plan. And as I said, it's been going on for eight months, there's really no need for it, and initially, when I went to the MPC, I was told it would not be a problem. It's clear on their application that they should not have accepted the site plan unless it was complete, but they accepted it, and they surely took my money. And here I am, six, seven months later, and they're still asking for changes to the site plan they accepted six or seven months ago. And basically, what they're doing is putting me in a financial bind. And I'm trying to find a good word for it, but it's starting to take me off to the point where I came here today, because it's obvious, and I can prove it's obvious, because if you look at the site plan, as a matter of fact, I went to the MPC two weeks ago and got a copy of the application I submitted, and as I suspected, they're just going down the list and checking off the things that weren't checked off initially when they accepted it. So basically, I'm here to find out if there's an alternative or something I can do to get beyond this process, because, as I said, it's obvious that it's intentional. Thank you.
And I'll say, Mr. Baker, this property that he's referring to is in my district, and we did have a chance to visit about this the other day. And I did look up something that I think may be helpful, but I'm not sure, do you happen to know what year your building was constructed?
I believe it was thirty, nineteen thirty-five is last I saw.
Then this, then the idea that I looked up should be helpful. So let's talk about that. Otherwise, you know, I'm not sure if, if the delay here, I mean, what is shocking about it, I mean, a lot of people end up having modifications to a site plan, you know, but I mean, what is really disappointing here is how long this has taken.
Yes, and it's been about twenty modifications.
Yeah, you know, and he's spent a lot of money each time, this is a small business owner, this is not a piece of property that's, you know, a huge corporate deal, this is a private guy who's trying to open a small business. And, and so it's a, that kind of time delay can be debilitating to the opening of a small business. And so, you know, I guess the question in my mind initially was, well, why, if they were going to deny him, then he could appeal it, it should come to us, we should be able to hear it and then move on. But it's been one of those cases where there, you know, it's sort of been slightly modified, slightly modified, slightly modified, it hasn't had a hard denial that he could appeal to us, so that's why it seems that it's taken so long. So like I say, I did look up a slightly different path that I think might prove more successful, and be happy to talk with you about it afterwards and give you my idea. Would also be happy to join you at the, you know, MPC, if we want to set up a time to go visit with them, and see if this idea that I've got might get you approved a little quicker.
That's fine. I, I'm just amazed that they're not even following their own policy, and it's affected me, so.
And that's my, Mr. Chairman, oh, yeah, and that's disturbing. I, I mean, we, we are a city of consistency. There's a process regarding this, and once you made your application, the process started. And how long you say this been happening?
About eight months.
Eight months?
And I have other site plans that were approved on average of four months by the city and the same engineers that I'm dealing with.
Okay.
And they're more extensive than mine.
Councilman Everson is very, very astute to these kind of issues, okay?
Yes.
At the same time, in regards to the policy issue, the, 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 the way that we accept applications and how they are, how they are pushed through the process, and that you have been delayed for eight months, it's very concerning and disturbing. You asked for alternative remedies, and I want to trust Councilman Everson going to work with you, but I want to ask the council attorney, have you heard anything like this? Are there any, are there any alternatives to addressing his issue that he mentioned here today?
Let me look at what his application process has been so far, and I'll give the Councilman Everson and the property owner to see. Now, you're the owner of it, you're not the tenant, right?
No, I'm buying the property.
Okay.
I have a note, yes.
And... And I'll just say briefly, my understanding from our conversation that Mr. Baker and I had, is that a lot of this stems from a parking lot that, you know, in order to get occupancy on a building, they want to have a parking lot, and that parking lot would have to meet certain, you know, quality measures of being able to have landscaped areas, and that those landscaped areas would have to have access to water, which at this site does not exist. So I'm just, be, I mean, I'm not trying to, I don't want to belabor this meeting, but I'll just go ahead and tell you, what I'm thinking is that we've adopted a unified development code that says that if a building was built before nineteen fifty-seven, that no parking changes are going to be required to it. Now, that was adopted after you applied in October, but if you were to withdraw your application and reapply, you wouldn't have to do anything to a parking lot.
Well, the thing is, sir, I understand what you're saying, I read the Uniform Development Code as well, and here's the thing, it's not the issue of what I need to do with the parking lot. I would love to refurbish or renovate the parking lot, because it's going to attract customers. But this last issue was about the placement of a spigot, a water spigot, and it's been a month.
Well, again, yeah, I mean, I can't address what...
I'm glad I worked with you, tried to work with you.
We can't speak for why they've been delaying, I mean, they're not under the direct management of us.
Okay.
But certainly, we want to help you, and that was just an idea I had that may be able to accelerate an approval.
I appreciate it.
One, just one question for you, you, the property that you own, does it go all the way back to Edwards, or is it, is it pretty much this corner of this, what would be the...
It's on the corner of Marshall and Sixth, yeah.
Okay. Okay, okay. All right.
My, my, my statement, attorney, as well as Everson... My, 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 my statement, this attorney, as well as, uh, Everson, is the process. You, you said it before. If, if the process is a continual process, then if it's denied or approved, then it, it is up for appeal. And it does, that's not an eight-month process. So, I'm gonna let these gentlemen assist you. And if, if you don't feel like you got, uh, justice, then come back next, next week.
Thank you.
Just a quick question, do you own the, the property across the street that is?
Yes, the parking lot for off-street parking, yes.
Don't put me on that. Which is a great, but no justice.
The guy that you gave, 'cause he wanted justice. What's his name? Mr. Williams.
Mr. Williams.
Who was it, gave him justice?
Gave him justice.
Next we have Pastor Mays, Lionel Mays. State your name and address, please.
Pastor Mays. Ten three nine eight Bankham Road. Just first of all, I want to say to, uh, to the council, thank you for another opportunity to come forth, uh, to our honorable mayor and, um, to those who serve in any capacity throughout the city. I, I am here on today to give credit, but also to state that there was some form of resistance in order to get to where we wanted to get to. And in regards to our meeting, our group that we had with the chief of police. I just wanna thank him personally and thank the mayor's office for allowing the chief to meet with us. The meeting was constructive. Uh, we offered some suggestions, he gave us, uh, questions. Uh, he gave us answers to some of the questions that was concerning us. And, and I think we work better when we all are a part of this overall dynamic, this overall dynamic. Because there are some people that live outside of the district and, uh, they don't go to Moretown, Queensborough, Allendale, Cooper Road to relate to some of the concerns of the young African-American men. Now, I stood with Hazel Beer and every other mayor and came before the council and speak, and spoke out on different issues. We have a serious problem in the city of Shreveport as it relates to income disparity. We have a serious problem in Shreveport as it relates to crime. Somebody asked me the other day, said, Pastor Mays, why you, you keep going to the council? I said, because somebody has to hold people responsible. I have a whole host of people that is behind me. And like Jesus said, he said, I have the Father and the Father is always with me. And so this is a mission in order to bring some awareness to, and to my good friend Jeff Everson. Jeff Everson, for those who think that there was nothing done, Jeff Everson introduced some pieces of legislation that was applicable to, and my name is signed on there, that's applicable to police's having body cams, uh, downtown. So that was one of the missions that we want to get accomplished, to get accomplished. And we just wanna thank God for, for Jeff's service. But also, if we don't recognize that there is a problem when it comes to, and, and, and our mayor, who, who, who I, I must address you on, if, if I was you, and, and, and I'm not you, but if I was you, I wouldn't let another contract leave my desk unless it have a form of minority participation in it. Minority, minorities makes up over fifty-plus percent of this community. And I think that it's time for us to step up and say, okay, if you want these contracts, then you gotta be conclusive with African-Americans in this city. We elected an African-American mayor, which is you. We elected another African-American mayor, which was Cedric Glover. And somehow or another, and I'm, I'm not saying this towards you, but somehow or another, there is a disconnect between the haves and the have-nots. And there is a problem, and I came to this council and I addressed that problem in that issue before this very council and told them that we're gonna become a city that's gonna become out of control as it relates to crime. And some thought it was amusing, but now it's not a little crime that's taking place. It's not a little murder that's taking place, but it's a lot of murders that's taking place. And when you have, uh, a, a population of individuals that are being left behind, they're gonna reach out. Jeff, Mr. Everson? Yes, I'm, I'm talking to you two. Okay, okay, sorry about my time being expired. Sorry about going, sorry about going a little bit over.
Ask me a question.
Yes, sir, that's, that's okay, that's okay, that's, that's okay. I was giving you some accolades on, on what you had done and presented. But to wrap it up, I just wanted to say, and, and to you, uh, Councilman Willie Bradford, appreciate your service. We appreciate all your service. But there is a disconnect in this city, and I know that some, it doesn't really matter to. But those of you that is on this council, you have a responsibility to not just a certain segment of the community, but the whole community. And this is what I've been saying for the longest, and this is what we're gonna continue to say. I have a group of people with me that we meet constantly with. But even if I didn't have the group, I am still here. I will still come and I will still address the concerns of those who feel that they are being left behind. And I think I articulated myself very well throughout the years. And I hope that there is no hatred and nobody's hard toward me because there's none toward me too, any individual on the council. I do think we work better together, but warning always come before destruction. And we are in a crisis situation now. And I think with all of us working together, I think that we can come to a reasonable solution in this city. But we gotta work together. We've gotta be conclusive and listen to everybody, especially those who are in Moretown, in Queensborough, in Allendale, on the Cooper Road, listening at these young people. And that's what I wanna thank you and the chief for, because he was very open to our ideas. And I thank him for that. Because we are the people, he said, he learned a lot. We are the people that's talking to these people. Not somebody lives outside of the district and don't visit, just have a church in, in the district. But the people that actually talking to these people on the ground. So with that being said, I thank y'all for the extra time. God bless you. Mayor, we thank you for your service and thank you all, God bless.
Thank you, Pastor Mays. Pastor Mays, could I mention, just real quickly, since we're, um, one of the subjects you mentioned was about income disparity and that is a subject we've talked about a number of times in the city. Um, another thing that I think unfortunately we overlook when we talk about that sometimes is a, a problem that is very prevalent in, um, in, um, some of our more economically disadvantaged communities, um, which unfortunately in, in, in this city is a lot of times synonymous with racial life. Um, but, um, but one thing is wealth transfer. And another thing is access to, um, um, appropriate resources to help build wealth. Because wealth, as we know, is that, that money and resource that you have, uh, that's not just a, a, a monthly income, but, but what builds over time. And, um, so there is a program bank on that was started by the city of Shreveport. It now operates under the United Way. Um, that is an excellent, excellent program to get people who are outside of traditional banking system into the traditional banks and help them to, um, learn ways and start getting access to those resources that help them to build wealth and to save money. Um, and then, you know, I think there could be more discussions about maybe, because I know there are various organizations that offer, you know, um, things about probate law, uh, for, particularly for senior citizens, but for, for lower income and, and really middle income and even some higher income individuals. A lot of people, if you are a first-generation homeowner. A lot of times you don't know how to set up the transfer of what happens to that home after you die. And a lot of times that causes a, a lot of problems for families. Um, now, people who have come from, you know, several generations of homeownership have already learned those lessons and then set it up in a way that creates wealth for their, for their heirs.
Yes, sir.
Um, but in many situations, and I, and I see it happen a lot, in a lot of neighborhoods, people don't have the available resources to set it up, that that wealth transfers in a positive way and some negative things can end up happening. So, these are some other, I just mentioned that to say, it's a broad conversation and there's some other things we can look at too.
Right, and, and to the mayor's part, thank you, Mayor, because we're seeing a lot of road construction work that's going on, on. People are happy about that and we thank you for that. But there's, there's, there's more stuff that people want to see done. It's good to see the road construction, that's beautiful. One other thing, and then I'll come to you, I, I agree. Just wanted to say to the, there's a program that the chef department introduced at one of our meetings, very helpful. Um, I didn't even know they offered it, but it was very helpful. They pay for funerals of victims that have been killed and, and it was, it's just, it's just a lot, you know, that, that people do that people don't know about. So I just wanna thank all you guys, I know your job is hard, it's hard to say just that it has to be made. Mayor, I, I know you have a limited amount of budget, you're trying to do something extra, that guy's loaded down. Appreciate that, we appreciate, we ought to be able to appreciate one another and give credit to one another and, 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 and not be offensive about, you know? That's, that's all I'm saying.
If I could make one statement, Mr. Vice Chair. Uh, and I, I appreciate your comments and your commendations. And I do wanna tell you that we got a lot more going on than just roads. We're doing a lot to try to help build this city economically and as well as develop. Uh, and I think you, you came in a little late. We have actually put in place programs this summer where we're working with thirteen thousand young people.
Beautiful.
Providing all kinds of activities so that we can keep them positive, in a positive climate. In addition to that, we have workforce development programs and training programs. And we wanna kinda plug you in so you can kinda share that as you go out. Now, we have a lot of this stuff on our way, and a lot of times, uh, young people don't go to those places.
That's right.
But it's important for us as a, um, as a community, I think adults who really have a commitment and a heart.
Yes, ma'am.
To making sure that people have hope and opportunity. We wanna help put in place training and education so young people can get those jobs and don't have to go the way of crime.
That's right.
And so we have a lot of that going on. So if you give us a call, we'll tell you how to plug in to some of that so we can share that even more.
Okay, because the young men's at Peace Street Apartments, I told them, they said, we see you at the council. They said, but do they really care? I said, yeah, they really care. They care about you all. They said, well, we never see them, Pastor Mays. I said, you don't have to see them. I said, I go down there, I talk with them. I said, the individuals that's on that council, they have a heart. When, when people got a heart, they, they, they care. I said, they care. I said, and, and we're gonna work toward reaching y'all young men as a standing up out here with nothing to do. Since I know that now, we're gonna plug in and we can, I can.
We can get trained and, and, and field, you know, development so that they can get some jobs.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay?
Thank you so much, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate you serving.
Okay.
Last but certainly not never least, Mr. Sammy Mears. Sammy Mears, nineteen oh one Centenary Boulevard, Shreveport seven one one oh one. Before I say what I need to say, I just wanna congratulate Larissa Monagisti for her win on the Miss Louisiana title twenty seventeen last Saturday night when I was watching the beauty pageant. Now, with that, I'd like to say that I, I said one time, twinkle, twinkle, little star, and it fell on me. Now, with that being said, that's a laugh. With that being said, I just wanna, just wanna say that.
We're just slow up here, so it takes us a little while.
I figured that. Yeah, twinkle, twinkle, little star, it fell on me. Now, with that being said, I did come two weeks ago and request for a little bit of help from M D, for M D A. And this year I'll be giving for twenty-nine years, as I did say before. So, if anyone after this meeting can possibly help me, I would sure appreciate it 'cause I'm going to be ready to turn my money over to Muscular Dystrophy Association just as soon as I can and flip forward to making it twenty-nine years. I've done this for a long time, even when they televised it on television at Channel Three and then they went to Channel Six for a short time. But for those twenty-three years that I was on television, I always gave my money to them and I never let them down and I'm not going to start. So I just wanted to let that be known. And if you say twinkle, twinkle, little star, looking up like this, you don't want it to fall on you.
Thank you, sir.